... public hearing, signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by light sign, seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. We'll move into our regular agenda. You'll stand and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag, followed by the invocation tonight, given by Councilman Dean Argo.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you bow at me, please? Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for your providence and your love, for granting us the gift of this day. Lord, we thank you for your love and your grace that allows us to be together this evening to conduct the business of our city. Lord, I ask that you grant us guidance, and that you also give us, Lord, the ability to do the things that are not only pleasing to you, but are in the benefit of our citizens. Lord, we also ask a special blessing on those that are in harm's way this evening, whether they be a public safety member, or whether they be in uniform around the world. Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over them, and give them safe traveling mercies as they return home to their families. Lord, we also ask that if it be in your providence, that some rain would fall, and give us some relief. Lord, we know that without that, that things begin to wither and die, as we do, without your love and without your mercy. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Ask the city clerk to call the row.
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Renegro.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The character trait of the month is joyfulness, finding satisfaction in what is good. You've all received copies of the public hearing and city council meeting minutes of May 17, 2011. If there are no amendments or changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes. Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by light sign, seeing none, the minutes are approved. I'm going to permit the mayor a boon, if you will. We're going to move his report just above the comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda, in an effort to clarify some information that's been widely distributed by the media primarily, over the past three weeks. So, Mayor Gillespie, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you. I guess where I really need to start this off at is, contrary to what has been reported by local media, there are no new loans coming out from this municipality with this amendment of the budget that we have brought before you. Unlike most private businesses or organizations, governmental entities must be responsive to a group, to a number of different groups and organizations. Governmental accounting will in time show full disclosure of city finances, and it will be actual and factual. This type of accounting will leave a very detailed paper trail that will be showing online in the near future. This accounting system is different as to how it accounts for loans and obligations that must be justified to the public. It will inflate the amount of the budget in total dollars that adds loans as a financial source, but in reality is offset when the loan payments are made. Revenues and expenditures are not the only inflows and outflows of resources reported. Other financial sources and uses include the cash received when bonds were issued, as well as transfers between funds. Apart from the fact that these resource flows are not revenues or expenditures, they are shown apart to assist the reader of the statement in assisting the balance between ongoing revenues and expenditures related to the basic operations of city government. The bridge loans reflect payment of short-term borrowing due to our 2009 and 2010 deficits. That said, these dollars, the same dollars accounted for in the previous budget, except that we do not show our bridge loans or other loans. Our ultimate goal is to improve our financial situation and start building reserve for the future. Line item portion of our budget makes us accountable, and at times will show a saving for the citizens' problem. The type of accounting that I'm asking you guys to amend us to is known as governmental accounting, and if you were to apply it to our $37 million budget that was repealed, it would actually tally up to $42,189,617.75. I just wanted to bring, put that out there, so everybody knows exactly what I'm trying to bring before the council, because there's been a lot of innuendos out there in the, some of the media, how we're out here taking out new loans. It is not about new loans, it's about being very specific, having a detailed paper trail, and full disclosure of what's really going on at city council, which that is one of the items that's on our agenda tonight. But we'll be asking you to hold resolutions three, five, and seven, and set a work session for, in the near future, if you so see fit. But after bringing that up, anyway, I have passed out to the council, and also have some back here for the visitors here, for the citizens here, some of our proposed budget amendments on the back. It also has pretty much what I have just read, just trying to make this as clear as a bell, instead of clear as mud. But if there's any questions on that, I'd be glad to talk with any citizens, or council members, or anybody who needs to talk about it. But moving forward, I want to go ahead and bring a report up about our May sales tax, which is actually our fiscal month of April. We had a 1.57% increase, which is a net increase of 1.57%, which is $21,475. Just want to report that to the council. But I do have some good news. My mother always told me, try to end a report on some good news. But on some good news to report is that, working with Jonathan Romeo, who's the Director of Business Development with Robert Trent Jones Golf Trail, I was able to renegotiate our sponsorship agreement for the upcoming Navistar LPGA Golf Classic, which is September, the week of, September the 12th. Anyway, the renegotiation accommodated the needs of the tournament in the manner that is equally advantageous to probable taxpayers. I presented you a copy of the agreement, and for you guys to review, and maybe we can talk about that at the work session also, or via email, any kind of questions, comments, but just let me know on that. Secondly, I pulled together a citizen committee to address the issue with opening our Pratt Pool this summer, through working, reworking our lifeguard schedule, and we found a way to fund lifeguard salaries for one day a week through the rest of this season. I'm announcing that Pratt Pool will be opening on Saturdays this summer, beginning June 11, 2011, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., in order to address pool issues. Also, the citizens committee I talked about earlier will continue to meet to find creative funding that meets with council, hopefully will meet with council approval. I had talked earlier with Councilman Fink, who is Chair of the Leisure Services, and he's aware of the committee meeting, citizen committee meeting that we have, and I believe Albert Striplin, Councilman Striplin says he's going to be able to make the committee meeting, and if anybody else can, please advise me, that way we make certain we're not in violation of any of our open committee laws or anything. I think a few of you guys were able to come to our employee appreciation lunch. I believe it went well. Had a real good turnout. The weather was a little bit on the warm side, but all in all, it went really well. And besides that, I believe that's the end of my report.
Any questions? Councilman Wood?
Okay, where to start? Okay, I want to clarify that what you're doing on the opposed amendments on the loans is simply paperwork, so that it shows the money we're taking in, it shows the money that we put out. Last year, it did not show that, is that correct?
That is correct. It's governmental accounting. It is, from what has been explained to me, is the most accurate, most transparent, detailed accounting available for municipalities and other governmental-type agencies.
And this is not a new loan, but this is preparing for the loan that we will have to take to pay the bond payment in October, is that correct? Or is this for the last one?
This is showing our last one.
This is for the last one?
This is all of our fiscal year.
Okay.
This fiscal year.
So then we will adjust next year's budget. Okay, when we do the budget next year, will we already have this in there, prepared?
We will plan ahead for that.
Great. Second, Navistar, did I understand to say you that you were able to renegotiate this for just in-kind services?
Yes, sir.
No money out in hand?
No pocket.
No pocket money?
No money out of pocket.
Way to go. That's a good one. Employee lunch, very good. I enjoyed it. Had a good time with all the employees that were down there. Just want to say I appreciate y'all too, but really appreciate the mayor for putting that on. Thank you.
Well, I do have, hopefully we have plans to have another employee appreciation. I've been talking with some guys who like to do some fishing, and also some hunters, and it's probably going to be a wild game appreciation day, next time we have one.
Sit down, Councilman Bowes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a comment. Mayor, I appreciate the hard work you're doing, appreciate the work that everybody's doing, because these are some tough times, extremely tough times for everyone. And I want to make sure I'm clear on this. You're not adding any loans, at all.
That is correct.
That's correct. And concerning the pool, I appreciate you working hard, along with the citizen committee, to at least get that pool open, at least Saturday, and hopefully along the way, because this summer, we got a lot of kids out doing nothing, and maybe Saturday will be helping deter them at least that one day, so hopefully we can work to maybe get it open at least another day or two, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, we will be having that committee meeting, you know, this coming Friday, and we're looking for some additional funding, some creative funding, and so forth, because it's, I know it's been some difficult financial times for everybody all around the world, and, you know, if we can have a little rest and relaxation from our kids and our parents, it's when we can afford it, and I'm glad we can do it.
Say that, Councilman Wood. Any other questions or comments for the mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, now I'll move to comments from the persons present in the public regarding items on tonight's agenda. We did change our order of business, and we will have comments from persons present at the end of the agenda on other items, but right now, we'll entertain any comments or questions from the general public on agenda items only. Is there anyone that would like to come before the council? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll move forward then. We'll go to council members' reports. Councilman Striplin, do you have a report?
No.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir, I have two reports. The first is from the redistricting committee that was impaneled by President Miller prior to him stepping down and you ascending to the presidency. The redistricting committee met with Joel Duke. We went over a number of things, including a proposed schedule of how we believe that we need to proceed in order to get everything in place prior, hopefully one year prior to next year's municipal elections. On tonight's agenda, you will see two resolutions, one from myself, that sets a public hearing that allows the general public to come to the city council chambers on that night, hear a presentation from Mr. Duke, who will go over some of the information that is very important to redistricting, including the reasons why we have to redistrict, and then what we'll have to go through in order to redistrict the council lines. Once we have that public hearing, then the committee will then meet again with Mr. Duke. We will begin to look at the lines, look at the numbers, see where we can make adjustments that will obviously be legal and pass the muster of the Department of Justice. Then we will have an opportunity for Mr. Duke to meet with each one of you, to go over your particular district and the numbers. What we've seen, based on the preliminary numbers, is that two districts have grown, that's District One and District Four. The rest of the districts are very close or have lost population, which means we're going to have to make corrections. Four and One are going to have to lose population, and the rest of our districts will have to gain population. So it's going to be, it's going to be a laborious process, but we want the general public to be involved as much as possible, and that's why we decided to have the public hearing first, to give you an opportunity to hear the presentation from Mr. Duke, and then to make any input or make any comments that you would like, and then we will have another public hearing later, once we've got everything together, and we're going to make a, put a proposal on the table for the council, have another public hearing for the general public to react to, and then the council will be ready to, hopefully, adopt a plan, so that we can get it to the Department of Justice, and have it pre-cleared, so that we can move forward. That's my first resolution. The second resolution is a resolution from Councilman Wood, and that is to have a moratorium on annexations and de-annexations. I had a constituent ask me, "Well, why are you putting a moratorium on annexations and de-annexations?" And the reason being is, the numbers that we're using is from the 2010 census, and if we allow annexations or de-annexations, that changes the numbers that we're going to be dealing with. So if we have a moratorium for one year, it will allow us to use the numbers, as Mr. Duke has collected from the 2010 census, and we will not make any major changes to those numbers, and we can proceed. So those two resolutions are on the agenda this evening. The second issue is a resolution that I'm going to be bringing from the floor, and I don't know where the mayor went, but the mayor asked that we hold resolutions three, five, and seven. Three and five are dealing with wastewater, and if we hold those, then I'm not sure it's going to be necessary to bring the resolution from the floor, and since he's not here, I can't ask him. But I do have a resolution from the floor that will deal with the wastewater department. It's about $5,720 to pay for some sleeves that are for the UV disinfection system at Pine Creek. We'll have an opportunity to discuss that at that particular time, but I placed that resolution from the floor at your table, so you should have that in front of you, or have access to it. Mr. President, thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Argo, Councilman Miller?
Yeah, not a committee report, but subsequent to the changes that we've recently undergone in your appointing me as Chairman of the Fire Committee, I did have an opportunity to meet with Chief Brown. We met for about two hours to sort of orient me in that new role, and get a better understanding of what his perspective is on the Fire Department. And in that regard, one of the prime things that's on the top of the list, in terms of a time-sensitive matter, and for other considerations, is our EMS services, our ambulance service basically in the county. So we're working on that issue, and I'm learning a lot more detail about that, and we will be convening a fire committee in the very near future, and subsequently bringing that and other pertinent issues to the full council. So I just wanted to tell you that I'm engaging in that new role, back as Chair of the Fire Committee, and more information will follow.
Thank you, Councilman Miller. Councilman Bowes?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, sir.
Well, the City Prattville Finance Committee met for three hours last night, and we covered a great deal of business items, covered a lot of turf. I can say that we are moving forward. Things are getting a little bit better every day. I have a, or, excuse me, there will be a copy of the agenda that we went over last night on the website at the end of today's meeting, if you'd like to peruse that, and if there are any questions pertaining to that Finance Committee agenda, then feel free to call me, the mayor, or any member of the Finance Committee, and we'll be happy to talk to you about it. It's time to move into our agenda now. The Chair would like to put six items on a consent agenda, if it is the will of the body of the council. Resolution number one would be to set a public hearing to declare various witted lots to be a public nuisance, and ordering their abatement, per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. The second is a resolution to set a public hearing regarding adoption of the 2009 International Building and Fire Code. The third resolution is to set a public hearing for June 20, 2011, to discuss redistricting of council districts. Resolution four is to appoint Nathan Fink to the 911 Board. Resolution five is to appoint Ray Bowes to the Planning Commission, and Resolution six is to appoint Clarence "Beau" Evans to the Industrial Development Board. If it's the will of the council, I'll entertain a motion to move these items to a consent agenda. Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I guess my question is probably for Chief Brown. Chief, in the past, when we've adopted building and fire codes, there have been issues in those dealing with PVC pipe, and sprinklers, and all that type of stuff. If we move this to a consent, is there anything going to come back? And are we going to get jumped on by contractors, or anything like that?
Chief Johnson and Mr. Duke have met with the building people in the community. I can't think of anything, can either of y'all? This is just setting a hearing to do it, but we've already had meetings with the building people in moving forward. This is just to keep it updated, where there's not have been impact like it was last time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to move these items to a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by light sign, seeing none. These items are on a consent agenda. Now we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion is made by Councilman Argo to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Any questions, any comments? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by light sign, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Moving into our regular agenda, the first item is a resolution to declare various witted lots to be a public nuisance. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds, number one, is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin. Number two, may cause the further spread of weeds. Number three, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property. And four, may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas 11-67-1 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, permits the city council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses, and determined the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, 728 Durden Road, 1804 Edenburg Street, 1570 Hawthorne Lane, 1322 Huey Street, 1087 South Memorial Drive.
Councilman Miller?
Oh, Lord, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're reading the consent agenda piece. It took me a minute till the addresses didn't match.
Can I just skip to the addresses then? If that's the same all the way to the top? Sorry about that. The addresses are as follows. 227 Chestnut Street, 409 Sheffer Road, 1264 Upper Kingston Road, 230 Radburn Way, 338 Bedford Terrace, 209 Radburn Way, 512 Mount Erie Drive, vacant lots on Winchester Ridge, Platte Two, vacant lots on Winchester Ridge, Platte One, 537 Weatherby Trail, additional vacant lots on Winchester Ridge, Platte One, vacant lot Winchester Ridge, Platte One, vacant lot Winchester Ridge, Platte One, 186 Winchester Way, vacant lot on Winchester Ridge, Platte One, 195 Winchester Way, 514 Weatherby Trail, 516 Weatherby Trail, Trail, 527 Weatherby Trail, additional vacant lots on Winchester Ridge, Platte One, vacant lots Winchester Ridge, Platte One, vacant lots Hearthstone Estates, Platte Two, vacant lots Hearthstone Estates, Platte One, vacant lots Hearthstone Estates, Platte One, 940 Fireside Drive, 938 Fireside Drive, then vacant lots Hearthstone Estates, Platte Two, vacant lots Hearthstone Estates, Platte Two, 103 Chimney Ridge, 102 Fireside Loop, additional vacant lots on Hearthstone Estates, Platte Two, 120 Fireside Loop, 998 Fireside Drive, and 132 Patty Loop. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds, and report such costs to the city council following their removal. Mr. President, I so move.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Bowes?
On line 32, page three, vacant lot Hearthstone Estates, Platte Two, Lewis Hillier, 940 Silver Creek Circle, Prattville, Alabama. That is a lot that has a brand-new home sitting on it, and a brand-new sod. I mentioned this to you last time, asking to take it off, so I would like to remove this from the line item, so that we don't send out another letter, and I don't get another phone call, please. He is a neighbor, and I hear it every time he gets that little green slip of paper in the mailbox. So can we remove that from the line? I make a motion to remove line 32, 33, and 34.
Do you want to put that in the form of an amendment?
He's already got a letter. No more action will be taken? All right, I'll remove my motion.
Okay, you're withdrawing your motion then. Any other comments, questions pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by light sign, seeing none, this resolution passes. Resolution number two is to grant a retail beer off-premise only, and retail wine off-premise only license to Vayush Patel Owner to be doing business as King Meat &amp; Food. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas Vayush Patel Owner doing business as King Meat &amp; Food has obtained a business located at 143 Highway 82, bypass East Prattville, Alabama 36067, which is intended to be a convenience store. And whereas the owner of said business has applied for a retail beer off-premise only and retail wine off-premise only license, and whereas said license will be a new application, and whereas said application has been investigated by the City of Prattville Police Department and referred to the City Council Public Safety Committee, and therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama hereby approves the issuance of a retail beer off-premise only and retail wine off-premise only license to Vayush Patel Owner doing business as King Meat &amp; Food, 143 Highway 82, bypass East Prattville, Alabama. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution forward. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by light sign, seeing none, this resolution is approved. Resolution number three is to award bid 011-001 to Cornerstone Civil Contractors LLC for the Aeration Basin Improvement to Tagga Creek Wastewater Treatment the Aeration Basin improvements at Otoga Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $178,164.93. Mr. Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville is in need of upgrading an aeration basin at Otoga Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, and whereas funding for said improvements has been provided by ADECA, and whereas bids were let and sent to six vendors, and whereas five bids were received, and whereas Cornerstone Civil Contractors LLC was the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $178,164.93. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid in the amount of $178,164.93 to Cornerstone Civil Contractors LLC for aeration basin improvements at Otoga Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the wastewater Otoga wastewater aeration basin line item and are to be reimbursed by ADECA. Be it further resolved that Mayor Bill Gillespie Jr. is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary for the completion, payment, and reimbursement for this project. Mr. President, I so move.
This resolution has been moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Is there any discussion? Councilman Argo.
Yes, sir. Biding by the mayor's wishes, he's asking to hold Resolution number three. I'm not really sure why, but I take him at his word, and if we need to hold it, I make a motion to hold this until our second meeting in June, which is on the 21st of June. So I make a motion to hold till the 21st of June.
Councilman Argo has moved that we hold this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Any discussion on the motion to hold? Councilman Wood.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Councilman Argo, at our meeting last night, and if you can tell us the day where that $178,000 is coming from, we'd probably go ahead and pass it. But in the Finance Committee meeting last night, it was found out that we didn't have the money, and it says here that funding for said improvement has been provided by ADECA, and we found out that they have not been provided. So we want to have a discussion on it to see where we're going to get the money from to go ahead and move forward with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Councilman Miller.
And this is reimbursable, but we have to front the money? That's the issue?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of holding this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by like signs? Seeing none, this resolution will be held until our second meeting in, you said what? June?
21st.
21st of June? 21st of June. Next item is an ordinance request to surplus one 2004 Harley-Davidson and miscellaneous audio/video equipment from the Police Department and one RICO scanner from the Planning Department. Mr. Bowes, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Biding by the City Council of the City of Prattville as follows, that the items listed below are hereby declared a surplus of the Police Department and are to be removed from inventory of said department. 2004 Harley-Davidson Panasonic fax phone keyboard, electronic keyboard, I'm sorry, hands, not electronic keyboard, it's Keytronic keyboard, NMB keyboard, HP PhotoSmart printer, HP LaserJet 5000 printer, Southern Microsoft Systems Computer Tower, Sony CCD TR66 8mm video camera, Sony CCD TR66 8mm camera, Sony CCD TR67 8mm video camera, a Video 44 Sony CD TR517 8mm camera, a Video 47 Canon L28mm video camera, a Video 48 Minolta 35mm camera, a Sony Maverick MVC 5000, Radio Shack Four-Channel Stereo Mixer, Mitsubishi Video Copier Processor. That one Rycon Wide Format Scanner, serial number A7879030013 is hereby declared surplus of the Planning Department, and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said inventory through governmentdeals.com. I so move.
Thank you, Councilman Bowes. Is there a second to this proposed ordinance?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. By point of order, this will be held to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second. Councilman Bowes moved the suspension of the rules. It's seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? Seeing none, the rules are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any discussion on the ordinance before us at this time? Councilman Fink.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious because a 2004 Harley-Davidson, and I'm not sure, Chief, you may be the best one, seems like a relatively new Harley-Davidson, and usually they're a lot older, I think, that we normally surplus. I guess, I'm not even sure of the question, it just seems kind of like a fairly recent model Harley-Davidson that we're surplus in. Has it been damaged, or has it been wrecked, or something like that?
All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, this ordinance is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for services with Goodman Mills &amp; K. Wood for a wastewater study with a cost not to exceed $3,000. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville wastewater facilities are in need of updating, and whereas the operation of same could benefit from infrastructure improvements, technological advances, and equipment upgrades, and whereas these improvements could create a significant amount of savings to the City of Prattville, and whereas the most cost-effective way to accomplish this goal is through a study which will address short-term and long-term goals in an attempt to make this department self-sufficient, and whereas a five-year master plan needs to be developed which will outline future capital needs and necessary improvements, and whereas Goodman Mills &amp; K. Wood have the, has the expertise to perform such a study. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the expenditure of $3,000 to Goodman Mills &amp; K. Wood to formulate this plan, which is to be completed within 30 days, and be it further resolved that this study shall include the following: One, discussions with city staff, officials, and leaders. Two, a written narrative as to city expectations of this plan, the wastewater department, etc. Number three, inventory of equipment. Number four, financial analysis of the wastewater department, revenue, expenses, debt, etc. Five, a five-year master plan of projected improvements. Six, methods to fund any projected improvements. Seven, an outline of all other possible options for operations and maintenance. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds not to exceed $3,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid from the wastewater blank line item. Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Argo. I'm not sure that this resolution is proper since we have a blank in it. I'm going to have to refer to our legal counsel on that.
You need to know where it's coming from, so we have to ask Mr. Mosley where, which line item it would come from.
Okay. Mr. Mosley, can you enlighten us so we can put this in on the resolution?
One second.
Mr. McDowell, do we need an amendment on this to include that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Councilman Argo.
Technically, it's not properly before us, so you can't amend it.
Correct. You're absolutely right. Thank you for pointing that out.
As a point of order, I would ask for a second, get it on the floor, let's amend it, get it in the right, proper move mode, and then I'll make a motion to hold it for two weeks.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. It is properly before us. Is there any discussion on this? Councilman Argo.
Mr. President, on line 51, where the blank is, I'm making a motion to amend it to include the words miscellaneous contract services.
Okay. The amendment has been proposed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we will vote on the amendment to the resolution. All those in favor of the amendment?
Two things matter at once.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm off the wall.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to the resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by like signs? Seeing none, the resolution is properly amended and properly before us. Councilman Argo.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we hold Resolution number five for two weeks until our next meeting on the 21st of June.
There's been a motion to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on the motion to hold? All those in favor of holding this resolution signify by raising your right hand? Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, this resolution holds. Next resolution is to declare a moratorium on any future annexations or de-annexations Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas municipal elections are set to occur in August 2012, and whereas the 2010 population census showed a substantial increase in the population of the City of Prattville, and whereas as a result of this increase, the district lines for the City Council will have to be redrawn and reconfigured. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that a moratorium on any future annexations and de-annexation shall be enforced until the municipal elections in August 2012. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Bowes.
I think my question is going to go to David, our attorney. Mr. McDowell, there's a couple of points that people call me that are concerned. One, would this violate the Voting Rights Act of, Civil Rights Act of 1965?
I do not know the specific answer to that. It would probably be well-served to let me check on that.
And then, two, legally, can we do this, or are we going to be overstepping the boundary of the legislature? Because they also have the right to de-annex or annex. So can we do this at all? Is that something else you can check on for me?
I can check on that. I'm probably more concerned with the...
The first?
The first.
I would ask that we hold this for two weeks and let these questions be researched and answered, please?
Okay, there's a move to hold this for two weeks. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion to hold? Seeing no second, the motion to hold dies for the lack of a second. Resolution is back before us. Any other comments or questions about this resolution? Councilman Miller.
I guess I got a question from Mr. Duke. How likely is it that annexations or de-annexations would consist of large enough headcounts, so to speak, that it's got any reasonable chance of skewing things over the next year or two, until we get the, until August 2012?
If you were to ask me that today, I don't see anything on the horizon that would, where someone would ask you to annex, that would cause a significant issue. However, I will say that the main concern is that, once you're in a process of redistricting, and you have a target of trying to get a plan in place by a certain date prior to the next election, and getting that precleared by the Justice Department, you don't, in my opinion, want to be in a position where you have to go back and redo that and then resubmit for preclearance because you've annexed property. Seems to me that moratorium, all that's doing is saying, is advertising your intention not to entertain annexation requests. You could certainly accomplish the same thing by just denying annexation petitions that are brought before you. But I think this puts folks on notice that you're not going to entertain those requests.
And you, and I've discussed this, you support this, and this is a recommendation from you.
Yes, sir, it's a recommendation. Of course, we don't have a crystal ball. There may be circumstances out there where you won't consider an annexation, and Mr. McDowell might need to correct me on this, but I believe you could rescind this resolution at any time and consider an annexation request. Again, it's just, in my opinion, an advertisement of your intentions that you want to hold off on annexation. You've said that as a collective body, and maybe folks will recognize that advertisement and stop submitting stuff for your consideration.
And you touched on my other questions, so, David, that's correct, that we could, if something, there was a compelling reason because something that none of us could foresee that surfaced six months from now, if we passed this, we could rescind it and entertain that request.
Sure.
If it was the will of the council. Okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? See, when did you vote? Did you get that? Thank you. Resolution passes by majority. Next resolution is to adjust the fiscal year 2011 general operating fund budget. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville, Alabama recognizes a need to have the following items adjusted in the fiscal year 2011 budget. Whereas the fiscal year 2011 budget has no allocation for said funds, now therefore be it resolved that the fiscal year 2011 budget line items be increased by $5,451,349.29. And funds or budget other financing sources line items be increased by $5,173,517.75, and budget revenue line items be increased by $294,929.41. And funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the 2011 general operating fund budget. Be it further resolved that the official year 2011 budget for the City of Prattville is hereby revised, and the total is $38,912,906.16. So move. Mr. President.
Councilman Striplin has moved this resolution. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Argo.
Mr. President, I move, we hold Resolution number seven for two weeks and ask that you call a work session so we have an opportunity to discuss it.
Councilman Argo has moved that we hold this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the motion to hold? All those in favor of the motion to hold signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, the resolution to hold passes. Resolution number eight is to accept maintenance of Winfield subdivisions, Platte 6. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution? Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution?
Whereas the Prattville Planning Commission granted final approval of Winfield subdivision, Platte Six, on November 6, 2006, and whereas the owner of the said subdivision must maintain the public utilities, rights of way and easements in the subdivision until accepted by the city council, and whereas the owner of the said subdivision has maintained the public utilities, rights of way and easements in the subdivision for a period of two years or longer, and corrected all deficiencies noted by the Prattville Engineering Department, and whereas all public utilities, rights of way and easements in said subdivisions were inspected and approved by the Prattville City Engineering and Planning Departments. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that all public utilities, rights of way and easements of Winfield subdivision, Platte Six, are hereby accepted by the city of Prattville for permanent maintenance. So moved.
Councilman Fink has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. Is there any comments or questions pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, the resolution passes. Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Alabama Power Company for an easement at 1904 Briarwood Street. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the city of Prattville has the authority to grant easements over municipal property and rights of way, and whereas Alabama Power Company proposes to locate power lines and other facilities on the city of Prattville's property located at 1904 Briarwood Street, and whereas the city council of the city of Prattville finds that it is in the public interest to convey said easement, now therefore be it resolved that, one, the city of Prattville conveys an easement to Alabama Power Company for location of its power lines and facilities on the city's property along Briarwood Street; two, the mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute an easement to Alabama Power Company, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney, David McDowell. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. Any discussion on this resolution, proposed resolution? Councilman Miller?
Just by way of reminder, this is an easement on some property that's otherwise not usable to enable us to get power to the cell tower that's being constructed there at the fire station on Briarwood, and there will be a revenue generator for the city due to the charges that we'll have to T-Mobile.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign, seeing none? No opposition, this resolution passes. We have a resolution to come from the floor. Mr. Argo?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Whereas ADEM, the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, sets specific discharge limits for wastewater treatment plants, and whereas those limits cannot be properly met without the UV disinfection system being in proper working order, and whereas the UV system at the Pine Creek wastewater treatment plant is in immediate need of repair, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, that $6,006 is hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Infill Co. Degremont, Inc., for repairs to the system, and funds are to be paid from the wastewater equipment replacement account line item. Mr. President, I so move.
Mr. Argo has moved his resolution from the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. By point of order, this requires a suspension of the rules. Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, I move we suspend the rules.
Councilman Argo moves for suspension. Councilman Miller?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Is there any discussion on the proposal to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules on this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? I see no opposition, so the rules are suspended, and the resolution is properly before us. Mr. Argo?
Mr. President, as you've heard in this resolution, and I've already spoken to the mayor and Rick Teague about this, it is imperative that we move forward with this. If we do not, we're going to have an opportunity for a visit from ADEM, and the funds are in the budget under the line item that was enumerated, wastewater equipment replacement account, and I ask the council to please move forward with this.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Any further discussion on this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? I see no opposition. This resolution is adopted. Councilman Bowles, do you have a agenda item from our last meeting that you'd like to have reconsidered?
Yes, sir. I was on the prevailing vote of nays on the resolution petition for de-annexation of interstate, intersection of Interstate 65 and Cosford Road. I'd like to bring that back up for consideration, please. I make a move, motion to bring it back before us.
Having voted on the prevailing side, you may certainly do that. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on this revisited agenda item? Councilman Miller?
I need, I guess, it may just be me, but the prevailing side, this was defeated five to two, so the prevailing side were people who voted against it.
Correct.
And you voted for it.
No, sir, I didn't. I voted against it. You did. You voted for it, you did.
Oh. I knew I did.
You and Councilman Fink voted in favor of it.
Let me just retract everything I said the last 30 seconds.
Any, Councilman Argo?
No.
Or Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. McDowell, for clarification, I just want to make sure, we passed a resolution tonight, a moratorium on de-annexation/annexation that has preceded this, right? If that's the case, this cannot be brought up.
That's a good one. I mean, it really is, and I've been mulling it over here since I knew this was coming. I mean, the council's voted, I realize it doesn't go into law until it's published and signed, and, but the resolution said you're not going, I mean, to have the moratorium. So I understand where you're going, Councilman Bowles, on the, he hadn't signed it yet, but I think that's the formality part.
Is it law?
Well, this isn't an ordinance, a resolution.
Right, so...
He doesn't have to sign it. Y'all, as a body, adopt the resolution.
But doesn't it say if government makes a resolution?
It does on ordinances, not on resolutions. Ordinances say once you publish it.
Mr. Chair, first...
In answering your, my legal opinion is that you, the moratorium is in effect, therefore, if you brought this up, you're going to have to undo the moratorium.
Go ahead, Councilman Bowles. Mr. Chair, in order to let him do his resolution.
Okay. Are you yielding the floor to Mr. Bowles?
I'm yielding to Mr. Bowles. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Bowles?
I would ask the council to move forward with this because I was asked to wait till the end of the meeting to bring this back instead of the first of the meeting, and because of that, I'd ask you guys to respect this, and let's at least look at it one more time. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowles and I have spoken, and I respect his right to ask that this be reconsidered by the council. I would ask the council to, not to reconsider. The reason that I'm asking you not to reconsider, we're enumerated in my email to Mr. Bowles and to other members of the council. While I have the highest respect for Mr. Dorsey, he is a personal friend of mine, I believe that this is not in the best interest of the city, and I strongly encourage the council not to adopt it. Thank you.
Any further comment? Any questions? All those in favor of this revisited resolution signify by raising your right hand. All those in favor? One, two.
Point of order.
We're into a vote, but go ahead, I'll, your point of order.
Well, I don't know that I completely understand, because I thought you had said that, did you say we could or couldn't do that?
You can vote on it, but I don't, I think it's not going to have any effect, because the moratorium's in effect.
Right. So why are we voting, I guess is my question.
It's an exercise in voting. I'm not being funny, I'm...
No, I mean, I understand, and I know this is a difficult one. It's not an easy, you know, it's easy to know exactly these parliamentary sort of whatever, but I just, that's why I'm pausing to ask why we're voting on something that the vote carries no meaning.
I guess you could, technically, you could vote on it and then undo the moratorium.
If it passes, if it passes, we'll just undo the moratorium. Just vote on it. If it passes, I'll undo it.
Mr. Chair, I call for a question.
Councilman Miller still has the floor, and then I'll entertain your call for a question, sir. Councilman Miller?
So, we have a moratorium, we vote on this, and then we undo the moratorium, and that's retroactive to that vote that preceded it on that item?
If it's the will of the council that it, they were to pass, you're going to have to undo the moratorium.
And then we vote on this again.
Okay.
Thank you, I think.
Okay, Councilman Wood has...
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes?
Prior to the vote, or prior to Mr. Wood's motion, I would like for you to restate what we're voting on, because you said we were voting on the motion, or on the resolution before us, but what we're voting on is a motion to reconsider. I just want to make sure everybody knows what the vote is. We're voting to reconsider.
Are you restating that for me, or would you like for me to parrot what you just got there?
I will state it for you, don't worry.
Thank you so much. All right. We are voting to reconsider. All those in favor of voting to reconsider signify by raising your right hand. All those by, that are opposed by like sign. Okay. So we are reconsidering it at this time. Now, the resolution is properly before us, correct?
Correct.
All right. All those in favor...
Well, you might want to see if there's any discussion.
Oh, yes. Discussion on the resolution before us? I thought we exhausted that, but is there more? Okay. All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed by like sign. It fails four to three. Are there any other items to come from the floor by the council? This time, we will entertain comments from persons present on anything with the exception of agenda items. Is there any? Yes, sir. Please come before us, state your name and your address, please.
My name's Tom Durcy. I live at 109 Two Street, and thank you all for hearing me. It's a, I'm in Ray Bowles's district, so by questions, we'll probably be pointed more towards Ray, but I'm sure y'all have had these situations arise in your districts. I can't get trash picked up on my street. The last time they picked up trash on my street was May the 24th. I'm going on three weeks now with the trash on our street, and it looks horrible. And every time I call sanitation department, anybody we call, we get a different answer, we get a different runaround, and I'm paying for this service, and I've never complained about it before. Why am I paying for it, or how do I not pay for services I'm not getting? And it seems like every time there's a holiday, there's a storm, there's any excuse, our route, on Tuesday route, gets skipped. And they always have some flimsy excuse, and I'd like to know what I can do, or what can be done, that I could get my weekly trash pickup like the city of Prattville's website says I'm entitled to. Thank you.
Councilman Bowles?
Since you are in my district, thank you so much for coming out. We've talked several times the last couple of days. I think, if you don't mind, I'm going to bounce that question right back to Edward and ask him, what can we do to get the trash picked up on this street? Or Mayor Gillespie, he's over there shaking his hand, really wanting to answer it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. First thing, let me give you my cellphone number, so if you have any other issues along this line, you can call me direct. It's 391...
I'm sorry, I don't have a pen.
How about if I write it down?
I was told, I was told yesterday that everything was on schedule, because last week, with the holiday Monday, they skipped Monday and Tuesday completely, and then I was told yesterday that everything was on schedule as of Monday. Well, as of tonight, when I came down here, my Tuesday trash has still not been picked up. And nowhere in our neighborhood.
Well, if you please, please bear with us. We had five guys out, I believe, today, and we did have a holiday Monday, and the heat, I know, affected at least one person, and so the, the heat is a factor. I'm not really trying to make excuses or anything, but I can just about guarantee you yours will be picked up tomorrow.
Okay. Well, can I, can I get two weeks of trash deducted off my bill? For services I'm not getting? It's not a lot of money. The idea is, I live right by the storm ditch, and every time there's a big storm, all the debris runs down the ditch.
Yes, sir.
The city never comes out to clean that ditch. I go out there and pick it up, place it on the ditch, and they never come down and pick it up until regular time.
Yes, sir.
And we got a mountain of trash out there right now.
Well, if you please, please bear with us, you know, we are basically understaffed right now. Like I say, the weather has been a factor, the holiday's been a factor, there's some other excuses I could come up with, but please bear with us, and I can pretty much guarantee you, you'll be taken care of tomorrow.
Okay. If this arises again, why can't they, instead of skipping, every time it's a Monday holiday, they skip Tuesday's route, for some reason. Why can't they skip a different area of town on different holidays and not the same area every holiday?
Well, one thing that they do is that, you know, on Tuesdays, or the day after the holiday, they're trying to double up around the city, and anyway, we are working, trying to see what other, the most efficient routes, and I guess the best way to just say it, we're looking through each department throughout the whole city to make certain we're functioning at peak performance, and so we are looking at each and every angle, no matter which department we're talking about.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. Peace be upon you, my sincerest and dearest, I'm John DeVoe, and my address is 510 Vendale Road, here in Prattville. I just, actually, the issue that I was going to address, I don't have to address it because you've already addressed it, and I just want to publicly thank Councilman Fink and Mayor Gillespie and Drew Peterson and everyone else that had something to do with seeing to it that the general public had access to the city's pool, and that issue's already been corrected. I want to thank you for the speed in which you addressed that issue. And the other thing, too, is there any plans to put a picture of Mayor Byard there on the wall as well, with all the other former mayors of the city? But other than that, I think you're doing a fine job, and I just want to say thank you, as it relates to that issue.
Any questions, Mr. DeVoe? Mayor?
Yes, sir, we do have plans. We'll probably be, if we can find the dollars, there will be some dollars in next year's budget for a portrait.
For, oh, for a portrait for the mayor?
Yes.
Yes, understood. Thank you. Peace be upon you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the council? Yes, sir. One of our distinguished city employees?
My name's Mark Rhodes, 1583 Upper Kingston. I'm an 11-year employee of the Fire Department. I am also the union president of our local 4141. I know this is not a question-and-answer time, but I'd like just to bring a couple of things up to you and see if y'all can meet within yourself to see if you can help us out with this. We know that this is a hard time. We know that this is a hard time, we understand that, we want to help wherever we can. I pretty much can stand up here to say for surely that we've given, in our department, with Chief Brown, more than any department out there. But what we're finding out, and we have met with Mayor Gillespie and our human resources, that the people on shift are getting hit a higher percentage than any other employees in the City of Prattville. We know that we have to give, we're willing to give, we want to give and do whatever we need to do to get this city back where we want to. But I know, as y'all plan and do whatever we have to do for this city and the decisions that y'all make, that you can't make one employee penalized more than the other. So what I'm asking you to hear today is, is, I know that, Mr. Miller, that you're the Fire Committee now, you don't have to meet with us as a union. Chief Brown, I've met with him, I do nothing unless I speak to him first. If you would please take the time to speak to him about this, let us show you where we're being penalized more, and it's roughly about a 9% pay cut for us that are on shift, and it's about a 5% pay to everyone else in the city. I think that's just something that it's, it's hard to work out because we do work a 24-hour shift compared to an eight-hour. We, I know that y'all have addressed that, that Human Resources has done a good job listening, and that's all that we're wanting. It's just a time to work this out and to get this right so that every citizen, or, excuse me, every employee, is treated equally. And like I said, I know this is not a question and answer time, but I wish that you would take this time and meet with our chief. We've spoke with him, myself, as a union president, and showed him this, I've had representatives come out of Memphis down here to show this to the mayor and the human resources, and the answer we get at this point is, well, we don't know how to fix it. Let's find a way how to fix it. If, if I'm getting penalized 9%, and another employee's getting penalized 4%, I know that that's not the plan that y'all wanted to do. So I ask you, if you take the time, however y'all do that, I can't get in front of the right person. It's not my job to do that. Our chief Brown has taken the time to listen to me, and he's tried to present this, is using the council and our department, or the Fire Department. If you please talk to him and show us how we can show this to you and y'all correct this. That's all I got.
Any comments for Mr. Rhodes? Councilman Bowles?
I've looked into it time and time, boy, this is a tough one. I know where you're coming from, but I think what he's trying to say, dollars and cents wise, if Mr. Rhodes made $50,000 a year, and I made $50,000 a year on this plan that we're on, I would pay right at $2,000, he'd pay right at $4,500. And it's not only their department, it also hits one other department, the wastewater. The guys that are working 12 hour and 12 off, it's hitting them the same way, and it's the holiday pay. I've looked and looked, I don't think we voted on holiday pay, we voted on the actual, what's the correct word I'm looking for, furlough. But that's what he's talking about, and I would like to ask Councilman Miller, if you could set up a time for all of us to sit down together to look at this thing and see if there's any way to correct it. Because it's hard, it's easy to swallow if you're not the man standing over there with the, getting hit. It's easy for us to say, yeah, yeah, and go on by our way, but I would like to take time just for the fire union, and for, for the firefighters and the wastewater plant, for us just to look at it one more time as a group of men. Thank you.
I don't, I don't think that any point, you know, I understand the concern about the union, but I can pretty much guarantee to everybody in y'all's district, at some point, we've helped, and that's all that we're here to do. We've helped somebody in every one of your departments, or in your district, and that's all that we're trying to do, and here, we're trying to help our own. And it's, it's pretty, we've got some people that can explain it to us, we just need the time for y'all to let us explain it and show it, and I know that y'all fix it, so I appreciate your opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. We refer this to the Fire Committee. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Good evening. State your name and address, please, sir.
Name is Ted DePlanch, and I had two things. I want to condemn, condemn that.
Excuse me, sir, we need an address.
We've got the pool open for, for one day. I'd like to see it open at least three days, and there's a way of doing it, and I'm willing to help with your, yourself and anybody else that needs to do it. And, and I also would like to know.
Could you give us your address for the record, please?
Oh, 209 Doe Drive.
Thank you. Now, go ahead.
And I would like to work with those people to maybe get the pool open a few more days because it's tough on these kids being out there in this kind of weather, and, and not being able to pay the money that the YMCA asks you for, and it would be nice if they would step forward and maybe give some little help in this time of crisis that we've got here. My other question is, when is the bridge going to open? When was this supposed to open?
Mayor Gillespie?
First off, I'd like to say thank you for stepping up, but Friday, 10 o'clock at the Doster Center, if you can be there, we'll be glad to get you seated in on that Citizens Committee on the Pool. The bridge is supposed to be real close right now, I do not have a, a concrete date exactly, but I'll, I'll have your phone number, and I'll be glad to, to give you a call when we know when it's going to open, and, and we're, we're definitely going to be glad when it does open, but it's very close, next couple, three weeks, I believe. But don't go into that.
Go lines.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay, seen none. Anyone else like to address the council on any issue at this time? Anything at all? Mr. Mayor, do you have any closing comments or report as we wind this down?
No, sir.
Councilman Strippin?
Yes, sir. Just a few brief things. First, thank you to Mr. Ken Johnson and his staff for the horticultural display that we have downtown Prattville, it certainly looks very nice, and the merchants are very appreciative of your, your efforts there. Also, a thank you to all of those that were involved in the Touch a Truck event down here. It seemed to be a very popular event, even in spite of the heat, and the creek side, as well as the physical creek, were major attractions that afternoon, and so appreciation again to the horticultural staff maintaining that area and making it such a nice and pleasant area to be. Third item is congratulations to the mayor for hosting the Employee Appreciation Day. Unable to attend, but I know everyone had a great time. And in a, a brief response to the, the last question about the bridge, I checked with the city engineer the other day, he said the target date was the 4th of July. I told my constituents Labor Day, so maybe they'll. Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir, the only thing I'd like to say this evening is that, beginning yesterday, the Miss Alabama contestants gathered in Birmingham for the Miss Alabama Pageant. Miss Fountain City, Miss Abigail Harden, who's representing Prattville, will be competing in that event, and I want to wish her the best of luck and know that she will represent the City of Prattville well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Miller?
No.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilman Fink? I am scheduling a work session for Monday, June the 13th, 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, that's a deviation from the email that I sent each one of you council members, we will not meet at Doster, we will meet here in the council chambers, 6:00 p.m. Monday, June the 13th. The items that were held from this agenda will be on that agenda to be discussed, as well as many others, you will be getting a, an agenda of the work session prior to that date. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on Tuesday, June the 21st, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers. There's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to close. Yes, sir.
Please, please excuse me, I did forget to mention one thing, that, we're going to be rescheduling our garbage pickup so that we go into our summer time, time zone on it, and the date is, June 13th is, we're going to be starting to pick garbage up at 6:00 a.m.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Anything else? Motion has been made that we adjourn, is there a second? There is a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.